Seven o'clock. Call this meeting to order for the zoning board of appeals. Jeff, would you like to make some introductions?
Very much would, Mr. Chair. So, in addition to our assistant planner, Sierra Pelletier, who's with us tonight, we have our new town planner, Joe Genowitz. And Joe, why don't you give a brief introduction?
Sure, thanks Jeff. So, I'm Joe Genowitz. I'm the new town planner here, coming from the city of Lowell, where I have about eleven and a half years of experience. Kind of almost two careers, in a way, over there. First half was with Land Use Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Conservation Commission, the Development Services Division of Planning and Development. The second half, I was, for the last five years or so, I was the Urban Renewal Project Manager for the city in community development, implementing city projects in some of our most blighted areas of the city.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, welcome.
Yeah, I'm excited to be here.
Good luck. Great. Joel is in Chimpson, right?
I do, yes.
Yep, it's right around the corner.
Yep.
Anything else, Jeff?
Just, you'll get right to it, almost, but if anyone is here tonight for the Avalon Bay Solar Project at 24 Dirkie Lane, they have requested continuance without discussion to the next zoning board meeting, which is scheduled for October 20th. And then just a reminder that you do not need, Mr. Chair, since Mr. Enos is absent, if you would like to designate someone to sit for at least minutes in the first continued public hearing.
Sure. Dan, would you sit in on that?
Sure.
For first public hearing? So, do you want a motion to continue on Dirkie Lane?
Sure. I don't know if you wanted to skip over the minutes or not.
Well, we got minutes?
Yep.
Well, any corrections to the minutes? I don't think I had them, so.
No, I didn't have any. I did look after them, I didn't have any.
Those are the minutes on what?
One for July, one for July 21st.
Motion to approve the minutes for July 21st?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next one's August 18th.
Motion to approve the minutes for August 18th, if there's no corrections or deletions?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, going to Avalon and Dirkie Lane, we have a motion to continue to October 20th.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along.
Just to be clear, is, who is seated for 60 Elm?
Dan.
So, Dan was not present. Who was last meeting, is that?
No.
Not an issue.
You were here, right Dave?
I was.
So, let's sit Dave.
Well, he could mull in, but.
Well, if he hasn't.
If Dave was here.
If he hasn't at this point, it would be more appropriate for Mr. Earl to sit.
Yep.
You're in, Dave. Okay. So, 60 Elm Road was a continuance from last month. Gentlemen's.
Good evening. Mark Slager from Allen Engineering, here on behalf of Gary Polesky, who is sitting to my left. At the last meeting, we went through the proposed plot plan, and we were instructed to go back before the Conservation Commission and see what they had to say about the proposal. They were essentially concerned with the setbacks from the lake and drainage runoff from the roof, and wanted a summary table of impervious area, which has been provided to them. Our next meeting with the commission is on next Wednesday, the 22nd. Essentially, what we've done is reduced the footprint size. We've eliminated one of the decks on the back. We've shifted the garage back a little bit. We still are not able to meet the 25-foot setback for the front, but we have made it a little over 20 feet. There's also a little issue we had with the application package, in that it didn't include the latest floor plans. Subsequent to the submission of the plot plan, the floor plans have changed again, so we will get a revised package showing the floor plans that match the existing footprint. I will say that the latest floor plans are actually smaller than what's shown on this plan. It's about a foot narrower from side to side. So, that being said, we are meeting all of the Conservation Commission requirements. They wanted the main portion of the house no closer than what was on the existing condition, which we satisfied that requirement. And actually, the screen porch is further away from the deck shown on the existing condition, so we're satisfying that requirement. As far as drainage, we've extended the crushstone pad, the full length of the house out back, so that will trap any runoff and allow it to infiltrate into the ground, rather than sheet flowing onto the adjacent property. We're also providing some crushstone beneath the deck and the screen porch. The screen porch is going to be built on sonotubes, so there'll be open area underneath that. So, runoff from the roof will be directed into those locations as well, so that we have infiltration into the ground, rather than sheet flow across the cluster lawn into the lake. So, we've addressed all of the Conservation Commission's concerns. We've reduced the size of the house, as this board has suggested, and we welcome any feedback from the board at this time.
I guess, without seeing what the floor plan looks like, it sounds like you're doing the right thing. I'm not sure that, you still have to go before Conservation one more time, I guess, or more than one more time on Wednesday, or whatever you're going to do that.
Right.
But the other thing that is, that this board always looks at is opposition from the abutters.
Mm-hmm.
And it appears you've got a small coupure on down there. You know, we've got five or six abutters in opposition to this because of size and My suggestion would be, and I'll beat Mr. Earl to this, because he is, this is his thing, you need to get together with the neighbors and get this thing figured out, is my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Because as you know, and maybe you do not know, this is appealable. So, you don't want to go through all the gyrations and then have it appealed. You know, we like to get it done right the first time. So, that being said, anything else from this board?
Just, I'm not sure, I think, Mark, what did you say? From this plan, that the stone is going further than what we're seeing here, on the side?
Yeah, on the left side of the house.
So, it's going where it says 10 and a half feet, or, what the heck does that say? It's going down?
All the way.
The length of the house?
All the way down, the full length of the house, and maybe three feet past the end of the house, on the left.
Okay. I'm also looking at this deck, and it's like you have a deck that's, for the setback from the lake, you have a deck that's 11 feet, basically, from the lake. You also have a patio out there.
There's an existing patio, and the deck that's being proposed is further away from the lake than the existing deck.
Okay, so if you took the deck, I mean, you have a patio and a deck, it seems redundant. If you wanted to do something to get the setback larger, you could either reduce or do away with the deck. I mean, it looks like you have a deck that's three feet from a patio. You're waterfront, anyway.
Well, the patio.
Is that deck on sonotubes?
Yeah, that deck is up, actually, there's a walkout basement beneath the deck.
Okay.
So, the patio is actually, it's an existing patio. It's on the elevation below the cellar floor. It's actually about a foot and a half, two feet below the cellar floor.
Okay. So, the deck is a story above?
The deck is a story above, that walks right out from the family room.
Okay, all right. I think we talked about reduction in size last time. It's still 150 feet less total, something like that.
You went 20, from 2300 to 2185?
Yeah.
2340?
Yeah, quite a bit. And then, it's actually smaller than what's there now, once we get the new floor plan superposed onto the plot plan. It'll actually be less than what's shown there.
So, there'll be a different schematic for us to look at?
It's just a little bit narrower. It's not going to affect the left line setback, or probably not the front setback, or the rear setback, but just makes it a little bit narrower from side to side.
Okay. Are you restricted to the orientation of the house to the lot now? If you change a little bit, couldn't you pick up a little more setbacks? Change the angle?
Not really, because I've got a long septic system going along the right lot line. So, I'm already asking for reduction in the setback to the septic system from, well, I propose a different kind of septic system that gave me a little bit more room, but there's still, it's only three feet, 3.8 feet from the septic system to the foundation. A little tight over there, too.
Where is the septic system?
Right where it says, "Proposed Batruminus driveway."
Yep.
And those two setbacks, it starts there and it goes out beyond the corner of the house.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just, maybe it's helpful to remind the board, there's two petitions that are before you, and I know the applicant is going to be required to provide updated floor plans. Maybe it'd be helpful if you, maybe after public comment, talked about the variance petition, which they need, because they're creating a new nonconformity with the front yard setback, whether or not the board has a comfort level that they've addressed that criteria, and then just the overall special permit to reconstruct the nonconforming dwelling, because if they're going to be asked to provide floor plans, maybe it'd be helpful if you let them know how you felt about those setbacks. Any of those things would affect size and shape, and maybe it's premature for that, I don't know.
So, in your conversation that you just had, did you say that on the left-hand side, you're not going to need any relief there?
On the left-hand side, we're not, we're further away from what's existing.
So, it's an existing nonconformity, and they're not intensifying it, they're actually becoming less nonconforming, so they don't need additional special permit relief for that? That can be covered with a special permit to demolish and construct, reconstruct a nonconforming dwelling. Where they intensify, which they're not doing here, they don't need that additional relief, but they do need the variance relief, because as of right now, the front yard setback conforms, but with this proposal, it doesn't, so it's new, a new issue, so that triggers variance relief.
So, on the left side, you're not going to make the 15 feet, you're going to be some number between nine and a half and 15, is that it?
We're going to be nine feet on the left-hand side. Right now, it's about six feet.
Okay. And what did the Conservation Commission say about the proximity to the lake, as far as that screen porch and everything? What are they giving you for a number?
They said it can't be any closer than the existing. The existing is 9.6, and our closest deck or screen porch is 13.3. The main house is proposed at 22.7, and the existing is 22.5. So, they said that nothing that's there now, our new house can't be any closer than what's there now.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
I have a question. So, the garage is at the end of the driveway here. What's the jog in the back for, where the deck is?
The three-foot jog?
Yeah.
That's just where the family room extends out beyond the back of the house. And there's a window on that side, where the three-foot jog is.
So, I guess my question is, if you push the garage back three more feet, box it off, I think you're at your setback, aren't you?
No, we'd need about four feet, four or five, 4.3 feet, to be exact. And that would push the corner of the house into the floodplain, so we're trying to keep the main part of the house outside the floodplain as well, where the existing house is within the floodplain.
Dave?
Yeah, really, two comments. I think you're asking for too much, and I think it's important that you somehow coalesce with your neighbors. I understand the neighbors can't say, "No, you can't do what you're trying to do." On the other hand, I think you've got to live down there, and I think it's just, it's too much. Too mu, you've, you're trying to go from 1430 to 2185. You know, that's a big increase. In all of your setbacks, you're really pushing. That's my impression.
Is the 2185 the square footage of the house, not including decks?
The, that's the, can you zoom up on the summary table from below?
Building coverage.
The building coverage area, the 2185, it includes decks and porches, and that's because I included it on the existing house. So, the existing house, including the deck, is 1430. The proposed house, including the decks and the front porch, and the state road is 2185. Yeah, I mean, if you look at a percentage, percentage-wise, it seems big, but if you, when you're dealing with small numbers to begin with, percentages kind of exaggerate what really is, was happening here. We're looking at an increase of really about, what, 600 and something square feet?
On the basis of 1430, that's almost a 50% increase. Come on. It is not small.
Well, if you're going from 5 miles an hour to 10 miles an hour, you're only up, increasing by 5 miles an hour, but it's 100% increase. So, if you're looking at 1430 to 2165, you know, it's about a 600 square foot, 630 square foot, or 730 square foot? Yeah, it's a 50% increase.
But there's also a limited lot to begin with, so it makes it stand out that much more, unfortunately, what it's coming down to.
Right. I don't think it's out of character with the other houses that have been recently built in the neighborhood.
But they didn't have the setback problems as severe as these.
They all had.
Not as severe as this one.
Some of them, yes, some of them, no. I don't recall. I know 58 had a front setback issue, a side setback issue.
We didn't have a front setback.
Fifty, no, 57, I mean. 58 was fine, just a little bit of relief on the side and the rear. 55 had some front setback issues as well.
Any other comments from the board? Questions? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of this position? Anybody to speak in opposition to this? Anybody have any questions? Comments?
If I may?
Yep.
The opposition, the letters of opposition from the neighbors, I think I've seen them. Does it indicate what the opposition is?
I think it's just varies itself.
Well, I think there were form letters, if I recall, circulated.
Yeah, it is a form letter.
Mm-hmm.
I still think it's, it's probably, if you had to categorize it, added density, traffic, you know, you build a bigger house, visibility somewhat affected, density in the neighborhood's affected, traffic on summer weekends is probably surely affected. I think that's kind of generally the theme, what we're hearing. We've had, we heard from the last meeting, and I think it's kind of like, nonconforming with a larger volume. I mean, it's. I still think if you change the orientation, you can go parallel to the lake front with the front of the house, you might be better off. The only corner you're going to be worried about is that one that's nine feet. I think I'm looking at your house now, it looks like it's situated, good size, situated well for that lot. Understanding you want more space, you want to upgrade, but it kind of looks like it fits. This looks like you're squeezing quarter and a half into a quart bottle a little bit.
I think, you know, and.
Understanding your intentions and your needs to get a three-bedroom house, but.
I think, actually, if you, if you, looking at some of the existing houses on the existing properties, percentage-wise, we probably have a smaller footprint, a smaller percentage of covered land with this plan than probably most of the houses around us.
Yeah, 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 you know, and again, we're here today, looking at, you know, the requirements, the criteria, whatever went on, when that went on, and how many years ago, and, I don't know, I just don't think it's a, you're, you're seeing a neighborhood necessarily precedent-setting. In fact, it's definitely not precedent-setting.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
It's definitely not precedent-setting, because someone else has done that. Whatever went on then is not.
I'm not saying it's precedent.
It's not what we have to be looking at today. We're looking at this objectively on its own, not necessarily about what else went on in that neighborhood.
Sure, that's, I think the opposition, or at least the conversation, was the size of it on the lot.
Right.
And it's an oversized lot for that area, and I think the percentage of coverage on that lot is less than probably every house around it.
It could well be, a 2,000 square, 20,000 square foot lot, yeah.
So, is this going to be a secondary residence or primary residence?
Primary.
So, the other comment that I would make is, you know, that if, if the floor plan is the same relatively, but just downs, skinnied up a little bit, you know, there's a room on the second floor with, has office. It's a pretty good-sized room. That may be something you may want to look at, saying, "We don't really need that office."
Sure, well, I understood, but just so I understand, well, this working-from-home thing is, has certainly changed that need, and if it's, if it's above exist, if it's above the foundation, does that have an impact?
Yeah, it's the square footage.
Well, no, I understand the square footage is accurate, but from a permitting standpoint, that square footage, which doesn't increase the footprint any, how is, what's the significance of that?
Are you currently working from home now?
My wife works from home a lot.
Because at your last meeting, you said you were looking for this as a retirement home.
I said, my wife, well, when I said retirement home, and I think I even corrected that, well, explained the last time, at some point, we're going to be retired, and that's going to be our home. So, you know, call, I guess we could call it what we want, it's going to be our primary residence.
See, one of the red flags for me is when you see a room labeled "office," what prevents you from making that a bedroom? And don't tell me because there's not a closet there. But it's a three-bedroom plan, that would make it a four-bedroom plan. There's a hallway closet, all you have to do is shut the door and open the door on the other side. I mean, it's easy to do. So, I just think there's some room in the plan, if it is, is the same plan as we had last month. You know, I think the consensus of the board is, it's a little big. I think that's the complaint of the neighbors, and, you know, I think you need to have a neighborhood block party down there and get together and figure out what's going on.
I'm sorry, Scott, but is it, is it the complaint of the neighbors, though? That's what I'm asking, because I don't think any of those letters say that it's the size, does it?
Any of the neighbors here want to comment? Sir, come up to the microphone, please. Your name for the record, please?
My name is Brian McNeil.
Other is Barbara Hanson. She lives at 51. It's size. It's size, and the fact that rooms that are labeled "other" can turn into bedrooms. And that means the occupant of the bedroom also has a car, and there's no room down there as it is.
Yeah, it's tight.
Thank you. I know from some of the comments last meeting from the neighbors, that you do a, you do some hoops, jump-through hoops parking cars down there on a weekend. It's kind of masterful of getting the maximum space. Still, that's a lot of activity there, and that, there's probably going to have a continuing amount of weekend traffic and parking, but I don't know that. You have more space for that now.
So, I think, Jim, I think that was addressed last time, where it's that same neighbor did stand up and say that never park on the road.
Right, no, that, I'm saying that, there were couple Mary about your parking, that's for sure.
No indication of what the future's going to be for visitation.
Right.
You know, kids have grown, and I bought a Contumbe boat yesterday, because I'm selling my motorboat, because the kids don't use it, so they don't come around anymore. And we have probably more than double the requirement for a three-bedroom for parking with the new plan. So, I guess I'm just still trying to understand the issues that are being raised, how they, how they really translate into.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about parking, and I guess I'm not, so, I think the existing house, it looks like the setback from Elm Road is 33.4 feet. This one looks like, what, 30? Then there's some 20.7. It looks like your parking area there, because of the size of the house, is going to diminish.
What was that?
Between your Becky House and Elm Road. Looks like you got less space for parking. I don't know by what percent, but by some amount.
Because that's a septic system.
Yeah, and you got a septic system there, too. So, it seems like you're building a bigger house, and you're losing parking. So, I don't know what that all means, except for your weekend traffic, but.
Well, I mean, we're building a bigger.
I was thinking size issue.
We're building a bigger house by square footage, but it's still the same residents that are living there. And, you know, there's still, you know, Jeff had indicated, I asked last time, the number of space is required, and I believe the answer was two. There's at least five at the new place, and it's at the end of a dead end on a private road, so there'd be no impact to the neighbors for parking, there'd be no impact for traffic.
You know the existing foundation size of the existing house?
I don't have those dimensions offhand, no.
Because essentially, the new house is going to be close to 40 by 40, 39 by 37, give or take a little bit here or there. That's why I was curious as to what the existing, that's not counting decks, I'm just talking about the foundation.
Mm-hmm.
You know, perhaps the shape of this house is not conducive to the lot. That's 40 by 40 is a big box.
Well, it looks like from this existing plan, Scott, that 10 and a half is the, more than half of that stone, so I'd say that's 21 feet, basically, if you looked at the existing plan, along the left side.
Is that going to be?
10 and a half shows where the stone is, and that's more than half the side of that side, so I'd say that side's probably 20 feet. Looks like you're going from 20 to this, but 39, something like that.
Foundation?
No, size of the.
Yeah, the foundation.
Yeah, the foundation on that, on that one side, I can't really.
I thought it was 3333?
The existing house?
Does that say 101? I don't know what, I can't read, maybe I'm wrong on that. It says, I thought it says 101. Maybe it says 101. I thought it said 10, but I.
The 101 is the, from the road to the.
Okay, I'm wrong on that, then, okay, it wasn't a dimension, okay.
But, I mean, I think that, you know, we're not opposed to you, as they've said, the board has said, in reconstructing another house here, but I just don't think the shape of this is right for the lot. You know, maybe if you reconfigure the house a little bit, you can, you can meet some of these setbacks, and you're only coming to us for one thing, instead of a bunch. And I know everybody has plans, they design the plans, and what's the look they want it to be, but it's not a perfect world when it comes to building on the water. And I know everybody has plans, they design the plans, and what's the look they want it to be, but it's not a perfect world when it comes to building on the water. Any other comments, questions?
Again, I have changed orientation and the shape of the house.
Well, because, you know, David moved off his two issues. You're trying to do too much for the lot, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, David, can you-
You're trying to do too much on the lot. House is too big, the setbacks are too aggressive, okay? Your neighbors are unhappy. I think those are the two things you gotta work on, and we can't fix them for you. You gotta fix them with your architect and your other people and with your neighbors, is, that's my opinion.
Okay, and, and again, if I could try at least, the neighbors that are upset, I'm still trying to get an understanding as to what, I mean, there's one here, clearly.
Well, talk to them. Walk around, it's a small community. There's five or six of them. You have the comments. It's pretty simple. Take some time and walk around and talk to them. We can't, we can't work that out for you.
Probably have a problem down the line, cause one of them blew it up.
What was that, the next one?
Oh, that's the next one?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it would be helpful for the applicant, I don't know if the board is willing to provide some guidance on what you might, I still haven't heard as to would the board be amenable to the variance relief for the front yard setback? You've been talking about, say, areas and setbacks, are there certain values that you might feel more comfortable with? Because right now, I don't know if the applicant has a lot of guidance other than talk to the neighbors and make it smaller. So, I don't know if there's some sort of square footage that the board would be more amenable towards as a goal. And while the, the neighbors' happiness isn't exactly a criteria, I assume the board is reading into that in terms of the substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So, and it, so you've heard that they feel that it's too big, so I don't know if there's some area that might, you know, give them some guidance.
I'm quite, I think, I mean, you have an existing three-bedroom house, and you're not adding bedrooms.
Correct.
It's still a three-bedroom house. So, essentially, you're adding living area or bigger bedrooms or?
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes?
I mean, the bedrooms now are maybe eight by ten, maybe a ten by ten.
Pretty small bedrooms, very small bedrooms.
Spoon-sized bed, not going in.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, there's one little bathroom without a bathtub. It's a cottage, it's a converted cottage, and it's not a, well, sorry, it's a converted cottage. It's, it's not the home that I would like to spend the rest of my life in. It's just, it's a converted cottage, there's no, there's a bad heating system, there's, it's just, it's on cement block in some areas. There's a septic system that's, you know, getting a little long in the tooth, and on and on and on. Insulation, I could just keep going, so-
Yeah.
It's not worth renovating.
Right.
Okay, that's kind of, yeah.
Oh, yeah, definitely not worth renovating.
Definitely not worth renovating within the same area.
That is right. You can start from scratch and, and work up some different, you came with one proposal, I'd be looking at options, what you could present to us and say, is this more amenable to what we want to do?
We, we thought we were moving towards a right objective when we reduced the size of the house by, what was it, ten or fifteen percent?
How much?
Ten or fifteen percent?
The orientation changed from the last meeting. It was spun.
It was rotated a little bit. It's, it's more parallel to the left lot line, whereas before it was a little more count on a clock.
Is that your intention to use that for parking down the line, that, that lot line with the crushed stone? So, that, just put in more cars, that's all?
So, is, you said this is a walkout basement? Are you gonna finish the basement to make rooms?
I, I have storage down there. I'm coming from a home that has a two-car garage with a loft and a shed. And I just have stuff, so there's, you know, being on the lake, we have canoes, we have kayaks, we have stuff that's gonna be just pushed in down there rather than being out and about.
It's a lot easier to get it in and out with a door that's rated grade.
Right, but I mean, you know, this box is big. I mean, it's a good-sized basement you're gonna have down there. So, I mean, you, you could conceivably store your stuff, and I know all about that, and still create a family room or something like that, so, you know, you're keeping everything within a smaller footprint, basically, is what we're saying. You know, and maybe you don't want to have a below-ground family room, but-
It's ground level.
Ground level, yeah, but I mean, on the, the, the lakeside, yeah, I mean, that's-
That's not bad either.
That's not bad, and then perhaps put the office down there. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things you can do to reduce the size of this home, or the foundation size of this home, and then maybe come to us for, you know, a side yard setback and, you know, you might just be able to get away with a few things, pull it back from the water a little bit.
Trying to help you so you don't get rejected, cause you won't-
No, 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 I understand, and I'm just trying to, to, to siph, you know, go between what, what you folks are saying and trying to listen to what Jeff is saying, where we're not increasing, we're, we're not, the non-compliance isn't getting worse, it's getting, you know, it's less of a non-compliance.
Except on the front.
Except for the front.
The front is the only thing that's increased, non-conformity.
And the front is at the, literally at the end of a dead end on a private road, so that, you know, when we looked at the whole lot and the house, that would, it's an area that would really have the less, the least impact on anybody or anything, including the lake, you know, any neighbors, it's not gonna impact any neighbors. And we did remove the entire deck in the back, that, well, that, that blank area at your request. You said there was too much deck the last time, so we just knocked that out altogether, and what we did was we pushed the garage back a few feet, which pushed, you can't see it on this, but there's a bedroom there that pushed the bedroom back, which is how that nineteen got squared off and that six or seven became three. So, we could pull it back from the front a few more feet and just get rid of that whole deck in the back.
That was a planning board suggestion as well, right?
No, they didn't go-
No, we were-
Con, con, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But we, I think last time we said that, you know, that size was big, too big, and you reduced it by a hundred and fifty-five feet, but that's something, I'm looking at, I think it's like, that's something like six or seven percent, the square footage. So, you know, that message that we kind of left with you last time was taken, but it would've been taken at a bigger piece, maybe. That's not a subs, I wouldn't consider that a, really a substant, you know, altering the, the direction of the house and the setting of the house is one thing, but the size down by six or seven percent isn't really much of a reduction. So, it's your pleasure, I guess.
I, um, so, obviously, you probably don't want us to take a vote on this.
Well, no, I don't think you want that.
No, you don't, no, you don't, so, I think-
I would like some direction, though, so we know what-
Well, the direction is, let's talk outside afterwards.
The direction is you're gonna make this house a little smaller and change a few things, you know, we're at kind of a disadvantage because we don't have a floor plan, but I understand the reason why we don't have a floor plan. You know, you can go on spending money all day and all night doing plans and plans and plans, and every time you come to us, we say, no, we don't like it, we don't like it, we don't like it. I think if we get the footprint to a reasonable size, speak with your neighbors, invite them over for a cocktail or coffee or something, and just show them the new plan that you're gonna come up with, and see what the comment is, and then come back next month and see us again.
I think you can work it out. I think the sentiment that we've been hearing is you're a good neighbor. No one's saying that, you know, the, the opposition isn't because you're a bad guy. I think you're a good neighbor, and they, they like having you there, and that's a good thing. So, I think you get a little bit to build on there. Maybe tweak in a little more to satisfy some of the concerns of your neighbors as well as the board, to put you over the, over the finish line.
Jeff, you look pensive. Do you have a comment or question?
None, sir.
Okay. Joe, comment or question?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, I guess we would like to have a motion to-
October twentieth.
Continue.
Continue this to October twenty.
I'm moved.
No lose in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, you have your directive.
Thank you.
All right, I got up, sit here for the next one.
It's not a two-car garage or more.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is fifty-three Elm Road, which is continuation from the August eighteenth meeting.
Good evening. Mark Slager from Allen Engineering, here with Dan Dougherty, the builder, on behalf of Robert Gibbons' place. We were here last time, and the overall sentiment was to move the house further away from the lake and further away from the southerly lot line, and shift it forward and make as many revisions to meet more of the setbacks, which is what we did. Since that meeting, we've also met with the Conservation Commission, and they expressed pretty much the same sentiment. They weren't gonna allow anything that was any closer than their thirty-foot minimum setback to the wetland. So, we've done that by reducing the size of the house by two feet off the back and sliding it forward. We've redesigned the septic system to accommodate the shifting the house forward. We are now thirty-one feet to the lake, twenty-eight feet from the lake to the cantilever deck. Excuse me. We, in shifting it forward, we were able to shift it away from the southerly lot line so that it's now slightly further away than what was, than what the existing house is. The existing house is about eight point seven or eight point eight feet. It's now nine feet. We've shifted the deck along the rear wall so that it's further away from the lot line than the main part of the house. We've also added a stone drip edge around the house to collect roof runoff. This, most of the front of the lot is constructed or has been filled in with a lot of debris, unsuitable material, and a very large layer of peat, so there's probably five to six feet of material that has to come out of that entire lot. And where the house is located, it's gonna be replaced with crushed stone. So, by extending the crushed stone up to the surface, what we'll be doing is allowing the roof runoff to go right down into the ground without being shed off of, off, onto the neighboring properties or onto, into the lake. One thing we're also proposing is right along the southerly lot line is gonna be a six-inch tall loam berm, very small, very subtle, but it'll be enough to collect any runoff and direct it away from, or prevent it from entering the property to the south. So, we've addressed the concerns of that abut a by shifting the, the house away, making it a little bit smaller, and controlling the runoff. We've also relocated the retaining wall, which is now gonna be five feet away from the lot line, right before we had it about a half a foot from the lot line, so that's less imposing upon the neighbor in that regard. The septic system, I was able to redesign it so that it's a little bit smaller. That's gonna be in the front of the property. We do have to get some variances from the board of health for, we've got to setbacks to the foundation, setbacks to the street line and whatnot. The only thing that's a downside with this is that we don't have a lot of room for parking in front of the garage. You might be able to get one small compact car in there between the garage doors and the, and the street line. But there's also the ability to do some parallel parking off onto the shoulder too, because we're not proposing any kind of retaining wall in the front where the septic is. It'll be pretty level in there, so there will be an opportunity to provide some off-street parking along the front too. So, we've had a two-car garage, and there's probably enough off-street parking for fifty more cars there, which is more than what's provided under the existing condition. So, with those changes, we think we've satisfied a lot of the concerns. Happy to hear from the board at this point.
Well, I'll start. The thing that concerns me the most is the seven-foot-nine setback on one side and five-point-eight setback in the front yard. And I always go to the same old analogy, is that, is this a two-story house or a single story?
Uh, well, it's a slab on grade, cellar floor on grade, and then one story above.
So, you wanna get up and clean the gutters. You put your extension ladder up, and now you're impinging on your neighbor because you can't stand it straight up in the air, or you're impinging on the town because you're only six feet. So, those are the kind of things that, you know, especially over nav, we always look at because it is tight over there. So, I, I think that's a concern.
I think it's just, I think it's like deja vu from when we just spoke about the last case. This is much more onerous on the size house compared to the lot. Probably thirty percent of this lot or more is consumed by impervious surfaces, roof and driveway, and I understand the crushed stone, but, you know, the, the water level is pretty high in the back of that house in that lake. I know we've had a wet season, but it hasn't dazed recently with five and six inches of rain in a day. Adding that impervious surface to that size lot, I don't want to be either neighbor, well, particularly the neighbor on the, on the, the right side. The other neighbor is a little higher. Six-inch berm, I'm not sure, and, and, again, that's today, you put a six-inch berm in, what's that berm looking like eight, ten years from now? It's probably smashed down and doing next to nothing, and the water's running off that side of the house. And pretty much, I mean, with that space, it's almost running right onto that property. I think it's way, way too much house for that lot. And secondly, I don't think there's a, a property down there that has a two-car garage. I see a lot of one-car garages with vehicles in the driveway. That's a little bit ambitious, that two-car garage. Adding impervious surface and, and cut it back, leave room for some more space without a garage on the, on the street side. I, I, I think it's way, way too ambitious for this size lot in a lot of different ways. And I don't want to be that neighbor who, you're putting that deck out there and this, I think if this woman, whoever lives at fifty-one, you've got a deck ten feet from her, you know, a deck twenty feet from her house. I don't know what's gonna, that's, that's kind of, that's condo living. That's pretty close quarters. You know, from, where, where, you go to me, Mar, there's a deck in the, the house, the corner of the house. That's, that's, if that woman's a member of the public, that's to the public that I'm at, in my opinion. And she is a member of the public, she is the public, she lives there. So, I, I think it's way too ambitious for that lot and a lot of different, without going into all the details of the angles and the setbacks, just in general, too ambitious, in my opinion.
Jeff, we got an email sometime today, or Sierra, cause you sent it, one of, one of yours.
Oh, yeah.
Was that on, from the, some engineering company or a surveying company, I forget the name of it, saying that they've been, they were hired by somebody, and-
Yes.
I didn't read the whole thing, so I don't, I'm at a loss, but-
So, the short version is, I believe, the owner of number-
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one hired a land surveyor, and I think they were providing a progress of their efforts to date. So, my recollection is that they started the process, they've conducted a bunch of research, they've done reconnaissance, field investigation, perhaps located some initial evidence, but they have yet to either prepare a plan or to lay out anything on the ground.
The last line says, "Initial task performed to date indicate that the area is ancient, along with old plan references. Plans obtained to date have no meets, bounds, bearings, angles, street radius, or any other monuments marked as shown. On a project of this nature, it's very difficult to estimate the exact timeframe for field stakeouts." So, I don't know whether that means it's doing more, or whether that's like, we, we give up because it's ancient and we can't- up because it's ancient and we can't figure it out. I'm not sure what that...
The way I read into that is it's going to cost a lot more money than what they originally expected because it's going to take a lot of time.
Going back to old records is probably possible.
Yeah, I mean, I put together a quick presentation on the survey data that's out there. If you want to just zoom in on the one on the right. The first subdivision of that whole property is on a plan done in 1934. It's basically just, some people call it a plan, some people call it a map. There's basically just distances on it, the roadways, no bearings, no indication of any monuments. If you can scroll way down to the bottom on that, see the little tip down the end? That's Elm Road down there. And if you go down to the next slide, I've got a blow-up of that area. So we're looking at lots nine and 10. 10 and nine were reconfigured. And if you go to the next slide, it shows you the plot plan. Try and zoom in on that. So that's the plot plan that re-divided the line between lots eight and nine. And it shows one stone bound. That was in 1952. That's long gone. I've surveyed lot 11, basically house number 55, 57, 58, 60, and the vacant lot across the street from lot 10. So I've got a lot of survey information from out there and I'm very confident in the lot lines. If you go down to the next page, what I've done is taken the original map and superimposed in red the lot line adjustments. So what you can see is in red, if you look over to the right-hand side, you can see that the street lines don't even line up. So there's a lot of indecision as to how to actually conduct the survey out there. What you have to do is just look at what you have on the ground and what other surveys have done in the past and find evidence of previous surveys because even the only two plans on record don't even line up exactly. So if you go down to the next one, you can see the red lines are the lines that are based on that plan. And then if you can look closely, there's black lines, which are my survey lines. But the most significant part of this is where it says edge of lake. If you follow the left-hand lot line, I have it at, how was it, 76 feet? If you extend that out, it's 24 feet into the lake based on the old plan. The old plan doesn't show where the lake is. If you look at the right-hand line, it's 109 feet, but that's another 16 feet into the lake. And then you come across at 34 and a half feet on the back. The real lot line is the lake. It's not 34 feet. It's not way into the lake.
That's what we call a lagoon, right?
It's what?
It's a lagoon.
Yeah, I think, I think when they drain the lake in the winter, that might actually be dry, but mean-high water is usually where the property line is. So I'm calling the real lot line at the edge of the lake, which is 42 feet across at that location. The rest of the lot lines are pretty much the same as what's shown on that plan. So, and I'm pretty confident with what we've done out there and what I've done and gone through it with my registered land surveyor and pretty comfortable with that. If you go to the, the letter by Robert Ansel and scroll down to the septic system.
Sorry, oh, was that the other letter from the others?
Right.
Sorry, hang with me a moment. And then which section?
It'll be the very last page.
That one or the page up from there?
Yeah, there's two plans attached to the document.
Oh, oh, of the plans, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's that plan that we just looked at. And then we have this one, the next one down, is the septic design. So if you want to zoom way in on the septic design.
Yeah, let me...
There we go. So that shows the lot lines too. And it shows the lot line pretty much at the right-hand side of the house. But what else is interesting is it shows the lot line on the, on the street going on to the other side of Elm Road.
It does.
You can see the dash line where the pavement is. And it shows that the entire driveway is on the land of number 51, which we know is not the case, even by admission by the neighbor, that the existing house has two parking spaces in the paved driveway. So we know that plan is not exactly representative of what the lot lines are, nor is it stamped by a registered land surveyor. So, yeah, there is a lot of indiscrepancies between plans on where the lot lines really are, but what we have to do is go out into the field, locate whatever you can on the field, overlay that onto what the plans are, and just basically make a best fit based on what works for all of the neighbors in the neighborhood, one lot. And that's what I've done and we've gone through it with the surveyor. You know, I did the frilled work and reviewed it with the registered land surveyor that stamped the plans and we agreed that, you know, this is where the lot lines are based on what's there. So we're very comfortable with the lot lines.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Come up to the microphone, please.
My name is Bernard McNeil, I'm Barbara Hampton's son. And I, I found a few of those comments kind of strange. My mother never agreed that those, we let the neighbor park on her property. We, we never said that that was their property. As you can see...
Sierra, can you go back to that other picture that was just up there, the existing one? Or the septic design one that was up there?
I think this, I think this is the septic design one.
Yeah, there is.
I have a copy of this that's in with the town. You wouldn't let me present it last time, but seeing how they brought it up, I'll use that now because it's part of evidence. That is, that is where the lot line is. And see at the end of it, there's a deck there. There's the dock. And there's a little step in the foundation that goes to the dock. So that, my mother's been at this property since 1967. She knows where this lot line is. When they were going to do, build this 10 years ago, Mezner and Bram made the plan that's downstairs and they spray painted a red line right along the edge of the house where the lot line is. I, I, I understand that he is a professional engineer, Mr. Sager, has done a lot of work down there. And I guess everything's open to interpretation. Now, I don't know if any of you board members went and looked at the line, but the line does not go at an angle like that. His line goes at an angle to the right if you're looking at the stakes that are there now. All we're asking is to follow that line that's there. And right now, we feel that the line is like eight feet to the right of... I understand that.
Okay. Do you want him to finish, please?
So basically, what I'm trying to say is, we hired a surveyor. He's almost complete. I'm sorry if it didn't say that in the letter. He was supposed to be finished before this meeting. With the weather and everything else, he's a little bit behind. It took me a long time to try to find somebody. The surveyor's very busy right now. I'm sure Mr. Sager will agree to that, that they're two months out. So I was lucky to find this person to try to get this done in expedient time. So I just wanted to say that's, we're contesting where the lot line is. That is our major concern, is where the lot line is. And if that house is tilted a little closer to the lot line, it could actually, where he says the line is and where we say the line is, the house will be built onto the edge of the lot line. You can see in the jog in that picture, that's where the, where the jog is in the right-hand corner, that's where the dock is and the break in the cement wall. And some of the pictures there, they're showing the edge of the lake is inside the lake. And 90% of the time, the water is right up to the wall. So I don't know how the edge of the lake is considered a foot or two into the lake when, when it's, the distance should be, probably be measured from the edge of the wall, not, not the lake.
So your dock is in that jog, that line?
Yes. And the break in the foundation of the cement wall is there. You can see where the dock was. And then the one that's downstairs is a picture of the dock. And there's a picture of the dock in, in that last one that she had up there.
There was no dock when I did the survey?
No.
No, it's not there now, it's gone. But the hole in the foundation of the wall to step down there, the steps to go to the dock. That is something that...
Was the dock there when you bought the house?
When my mother...
No. When my parents bought the house, we'd been there for 53 years.
So you put the dock in?
No, the dock's not ours, that was the neighbor's.
It was Norman's and mine. We shared the dock. We shared the property line. Those two cars were not, were not. He had only room for one car. And so we said, "Let's have it for two." You have to understand what we've lived with down there. I realize it may not be all the legal things. I, I'm sorry. I don't mean any disrespect to you people.
Not at all.
We hired an attorney because, just because, as you said, it's too bad. Neighbors couldn't get together, the neighbors, to talk about things. I spoke to these people two times in June and I thought everything was fine. And all of a sudden, all of this has gotten well out of proportion to me. I don't know how else to say it to you folks. I will say, I still think it's too big for the, for the lot. But I think that we might have at least spoken together, that at least we might have come to some term. But somehow, everything got in between. May I speak?
So hang on, hang on. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Midge Gibbons. I purchased Elm Road. First of all, when I purchased it, I was under the impression that I was going 105 feet on one side and 109 on the other. So the first I heard that my land went into the water was when Allen did the engineering report. I went by the town and the registry of deeds when I purchased the house. So I just wanted to make that point. Secondly, we did speak with Barbara two times. We told her what we were building, kind of, because we didn't have the full plan. We never had a dispute about where the cars park. I don't really care, I just want to go by the survey line. I have no interest in grabbing anybody else's land. I just want to go by the survey land and let that be. Unfortunately, she went out and got neighbors to sign form letters and that wasn't being very friendly. She didn't tell us ahead of time she was doing that. She didn't tell us that she had a dispute. What? Right, three of whom don't even live there. They live on lower road down the other end. So I have a problem with that. I feel like, you know, when I bought this house, I knew there were going to be hurdles to jump through, but I never thought I'd be going through an issue with 25 feet of my land being in the water. Am I responsible for keeping that lake clean now?
Well, I think you have, I think it's really a different issue. I mean, that, so if you look at the back of this, 25 feet in the water, so we give you that 25 feet, that's the, that's the lakeside setback. But on the side next to 53, you're looking for relief, you're looking for variance relief on that, and you're going from 22 to 8. So regardless of the, regardless of the, the lot line that's going into the lake, you're eight feet from your neighbor's line and that house is really close to the line, too. So your house and their house are going to be a lot, lot closer than the existing building now, on that side. On the other side...
No, that's not true. No, that's not true.
No, he changed...
Further away from the existing.
From the lot line it isn't. Here it is.
Yeah. We're 8.8 in the front on the existing house and in the rear corner, we're nine feet.
Half a foot.
I just think it's 10, 10.7 in the rear.
In the rear. And in the front, it's 8.8.
Right.
Okay, if Jeff will speak, I can come up to the microphone. Jeff?
Just to clarify, we're talking about a lot of different lot lines. So the petitions before the board are four. It's a variance because they're creating a new side yard non-conformity so that northerly sideline that has the 76 feet plus or minus, the existing conditions, they meet that setback. It's 21.9. They're proposing 7.9.
That's my point. You're going from 21 to 7.
Non-conformity, that's variance.
That's what I'm talking about. So you're going down from 21.9 to 7.9. That requires a variance, which the criteria are very strict on. That's a substantial cut in the, in the required dimensions. You're going from basically 23 feet to 7 feet. You're cutting it by two-thirds, Mark. That's a lot closer to the house at 55, I guess it is. A lot closer. That's the side I'm talking about. So regardless, I understand that, you know, the lake has moved and the back lot line goes into the lake, but that sideline is an issue. But the rationale... The rationale for making that move isn't, is actually for the harmony of the neighborhood. The renters didn't have a problem with us. They don't have a problem now with us. That's, that's on 55.
I mean, that, 55 doesn't have a...
No.
So let Jeff finish here. Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Okay, you can, I'll have him here for the next one.
The second petition is also for variance because they're creating a new non-conformity for the rear yard setback. So right now, it's approximately 35.8 feet and they're proposing 28.5 where the rear setback requirement is 30. And then there is a special permit to intensify the existing front yard non-conformity. It's going from 7.5 to 5.8. And then there's the overall special permit that would allow you to demolish and reconstruct a non-conforming dwelling with a different footprint, volume, and air. So for the side yard that's already non-conforming, they're making it less non-conforming. And for the front that's already non-conforming, they're making it slightly more non-conforming. And those are the two variances that we spoke of, the side and rear.
Okay.
I mean, this is, this is the history of that area. I mean, that's, this is what we run into every time we hit one of these projects.
We do, we do.
And we're the bad guys for holding and trying to be, do the right thing by, by the guidelines that we have to go by. You know what? Well, I really couldn't agree more with you. I think NavNasit in general needs its own set of bylaws. And I'll tell you the rationale behind that is when, when somebody comes before this and they, and they buy it, now they buy a property here. When these people sell these cottages, they don't, they don't sell them for 15,000. They get premium dollars for it. So you can't have it both ways. So when that happens, you've got to build a house. Now, these people are asking for a modest house and they say it's, it's big. I mean, the living space here is 1400 square feet. It's not a big house. This is very appropriate for that neighborhood, more than appropriate, more than, more so than the other ones that already exist. So I, in my, in my opinion...
The neighborhood, but not the lot.
It's the lot.
It's the lot. It's not the neighborhood, it's the lot size.
I get that.
You're taking 30% of the lot and making it, or more for house space.
I get it.
With impervious service and all that. So neighborhood's one thing, lot size is another.
Right. And I get that, that they are very limited on this lot, there's no question about it. So what we tried, we tried to take a balanced approach to this. And to speak specifically to your concern for the side lot line, we still have to deal with the Conservation Commission. We thought we had a balanced plan that we presented to you the first time. They, Conservation is like, "We're not going to move, we're not going to move on the issue that you can't go any closer." As opposed to looking at it from the big picture, which would have been, if that was a little further, closer to the lake, if we did some more infiltration, things that would make it happen a lot better. I mean, the distance between 30 feet and 21 feet is what we had originally, made a big difference on this lot and what we're asking for, this board for, the relief we're asking from you. Because that brought the whole thing forward. We're still asking for a modest house comparatively speaking. And I think that all of that stuff, if a balanced approach was, was, was to take a look at all of these situations, I think it would make a lot of... I think it would make a lot of sense to most everybody involved in it. Because now we're even closer to the road. I don't even, I personally don't even like the look as opposed to what was there presented the first time. But you've got to, you've got to have a, like a reasonable approach to the whole thing. I have to deal with the Conservation Commission. The Gibbons have to deal with the Conservation Commission. We also have to deal with Barbara's concerns. We thought we addressed all of those things as best we can on that lot. It's all well and good, the problem is, it's just too big for that area, that one lot. And it's, forget whatever around, because if you had a three acre farm there, or a lot, you could build anything you want. But if you go, but if you put it next to the lot line, we'd still come up there and say, gee, you've got a lot of room. This here, you don't even have the room to make a change to this. To satisfy everyone's, you can't satisfy everybody here for sure. If, I get that, but if we also built the exact same house, we'd still have those issues. The exact same house, we'd still have problems. You, but, well, if you built the same exact house, you could move it over a little bit. You'd satisfy some of the reliefs. I mean, just because it's the same size, it's where it is, you just move it over, that's all. I mean, what you're doing- The existing house right now is, is three, not even three feet off that lot line.
Well, I think, I think once again, the sentiment of this board is that the house is too big for the lot. What I, what I'm curious to see is what your neighbor's surveyor comes up with versus what you've come up with. I think that's going to be an issue. Maybe they'll come up with the exact same thing, I don't know. But I mean, I think that's something that I want to see going forward. And then based on whatever they come up with, we can make the determination as to everything else that has to happen here. Because it's not like you're asking for one thing. We're looking for four.
This is one of the tightest we've ever seen.
Yeah.
You're going from nine hundred to fourteen, fifteen hundred.
It's a tight line, no question about it. But you've got to work with what you have.
Yes, sir.
Chairman. First of all, I apologize for the previous outburst, but I'm just getting, you know, a little concerned. I do hear you in terms of the, you know, the size of the lot. But, you know, this, this is my permanent residence. This is my legal address, fifty-three Elm Road. I've lived in Westford for twenty-five years. I've owned several homes, moved around. More recently, I've lived in Florida during the wintertime, but, but here, you know, spring, summer, and fall. And we're talking about a seasonal resident who is objecting to a house based on what appears to be an imaginary lot line that we were promised at the last meeting, they would have a survey. This appears to be dilatory, in, at least in my eyes, about stopping me from having a home on that property. If you look at the other properties in the neighborhood, those homes are just as tight on their lot, their respective lots, as this home would be on this lot. It is not a huge home. And, you know, I really would like to get this behind us in a way that, you know, you have people sign a form letter that they're opposed to it without specifically saying what they're opposed to. They were not even on the ZBA's notification list, several of the people who signed that letter. And we were deeded by the Middlesex County Registry of Deeds, that lot. The town of Westford has that lot. Those lines on its records. And we've met every concern that the Conservation Commission raised. We've met every concern that this board raised last time around. And deferred to Conservation. We met those concerns. We moved the house forward so that the same thirty feet that they wanted, they said we would never approve anything closer, so we moved it. We picked up space, we're actually farther away from fifty-one than we were in the first instance. There was no change made, or maybe a moderate change on the side of fifty-five, but we had no objection from them. You know, before or now. I only ask you, look, Midge and I are getting long of tooth, okay? You know, we're approaching seventy years of age. And we would like to be settled, you know. I'm living in an apartment because, you know, we've started at least identifying, you know, issues inside the house, asbestos removal, those things have been done. But I do not think we're asking this town a lot from a permanent resident of this town attempting to build a home that is consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. And to be told that there would be a survey done a week after the last ZBA meeting. And then to be told tonight, well, it's in process. It appears to be dilatory, in my, in my opinion. And secondly, I want to say that what, I want to repeat what Midge said. And that, you know, Barbara and I and Midge had several conversations back in June. I explained what we were doing. The size of the house. I told her that Dan Doherty was building the house. That it was going to be similar to the renter's house. That it was going to be similar to the house on the corner and across the street at Hillary's. These were all done by Mr. Doherty. These are not, and they're similar sized lots. So anyway, with that, I just ask that, you know, we obviously will, you know, go back to the drawing board here. But I ask that this not be delayed any further. And that at some point, this board recognizes when someone is trying to delay something without merit. Thank you.
Well, we don't have to delay it any further, but if I take a vote and it fails, you're out of luck.
Why, I agree with you. Mr. Chairman, absolutely. No, no, I understand, that's why I said we'll go back to the drawing board. No, I'm not asking for a vote tonight. I'm simply saying that we would like to, you know, continue to work with you. But at some point, we all need to fish or cut bait, you know, I mean, in terms of, you know, getting moving on my home. You know? I live in Westford for a reason, I love the town. Yes, Mr. Mark?
Mr.?
You indicated you wanted to see the results of the other surveyor. Is it the board's intention to be a mediator between a boundary dispute?
Well, I was, I was going to defer to staff on that.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, as of now, you do have benefit of a plan that was prepared by a professional land surveyor or under the guidance of a professional land surveyor. The plan was stamped. And they did lay out that property line, dividing property line of particular interest. So there's nothing yet to refute that. And so if there is, if the other property owner there, surveyor finds a conflict, there are procedures in place per the law, what they're supposed to do to try to resolve a boundary dispute. So a boundary dispute between private parties is to be resolved, that's not, really not the purview of the board. However, there has been a question as to the possible location of that lot line. I'm not saying you can't factor that into your decision-making if you're trying to balance setbacks from the other, you know, between the two side lot lines. So you have a lot of discretion if you're willing to grant a certain amount of relief where you want to grant that relief. Like whether it's the left side lot line or the right. So that's up to you, and that is something that they can factor in accordingly. But as of right now, you don't have anything yet to refute that location. And as they did mention, in properties like this, it is very complicated when you're dealing with old plans where they were not based upon necessarily on-the-ground field surveys with a lot of control. And whatever control was out there is probably long lost. It's very tedious and time-consuming to come up with a good survey and to come up with anything that's absolutely conclusive. It's often a balancing act amongst the best available evidence at that time.
Dave?
No, I just got a, I mean, I find some of your comments inappropriate. All of the people on this board live in Westford. We love what- May I have the floor?
Oh, sure, I said correct.
So I don't like to be lectured by somebody. We're trying to do a job. There are some issues here which we're working with. Your neighbors have some issues. We suggested last time, I suggested, that you sit down with your neighbors and try to work some of these things out. Appears to me that hasn't happened. So I think the comments I've heard tonight is you're trying to do too much for this lot. And you ought to try to resolve the issues you have with your neighbors. My suggestion is you take that away and see what you can do.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe that, first of all, if you interpreted it as a lecture, I apologize. It was not intended to be that. But I believe that we have addressed the issues that were raised by the neighbor. So I don't know how much more we can do. We were expecting that there would be, you know, another- And then-
Said four or five times.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that it was-
I think I heard what you said.
Right.
From a different perspective, if I may, Dave. And again, you know, everybody wants to do what's right and what's good and what- Well, we're bound by variance criteria and special permit criteria. And whether we, you know, it feels good, but if it doesn't make muster with the criteria, then it doesn't. I mean, basically, before we even talk about any of this, we probably should start by saying, does this meet the criteria? Have a straw vote. If it doesn't, boom, that's a five-minute hearing. So whatever you prefer to do has to comply with the criteria. It appears it may not. Because without substantial detriment to the public good, public's around you. And it seems like it's detrimental to them. So you're up against a variance criteria regardless of what you want to do and what the numbers come out, what the survey comes out with. We're kind of jumping over the variance criteria, and I just want to bring that up as something that we've got to be more mindful of as we go through. And you're hearing any of the other here.
Yep.
That's number one thing up there on the board, is do you meet the criteria of the variance and the special permit? You have two variances that you're looking at. That's a tough hurdle. That's a tough hurdle legally.
Yep.
So, all right.
Thank you.
You understand the variance on the seven point nine? The five point eight out of the street? And?
Twenty-eight point five to the deck.
Twenty-eight point five to the deck. So to the Hanson's, this meeting's going to be continued for another month. If your surveyor doesn't have the plan here, we're going with this plan. Plain and simple. Well, that's neither hand nor there. We want to make sure all the parties are heard. I think you have a direction, whether you like it or not. To Jim's point, you know, the variance criterion is much more difficult than the special permit criterion. So why don't you see if you can massage this a little bit? And come back to us with something different. And once again, you know, this is a big box, forty-two by thirty-nine. You know, can you make it go this way and this way? I don't know, I mean, I think there's some alternatives there.
And I'll tell you, I don't, I don't think, again, we've had a lot of discussion about that lot line going into the lake. I have no anxiety over that thirty versus twenty-eight five. A foot and a half is not, that's not about, it's not about that.
We get that.
So it's about, that one's not, that's not even, you can leave that there and do something else, but that's-
That's the Conservation, that's what we do with it.
Conservation, that's not us.
I, that's what I started out with by saying, if we could take a balanced approach, we could do something different. We do something, but-
But that's a foot and a half, so that's not going to make a heck of a lot of difference.
I get that.
The twenty-eight, that's, yep, it's the, it's the other sides.
Well, what I'm saying is try to, try to lob off nine feet off a fourteen hundred or fifteen hundred square foot house. Like the previous, you're both trying to put garages in these things.
Yeah.
And that's taking a lot of space that could be worked out for a living space. I mean-
I've only seen, I see no houses down there that have a two-car garage.
So this is slab on grade with a walkout?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So once again, you've got a forty-two by thirty-three walkout basement. Maybe you can do something with that, I don't know. I just, you know, we heard the sentiment of the board that it's a little big for that lot, regardless of what else is down there, we don't care. What else is down there is there. We're here to talk about this. So do you have any questions for us, other than what we've already talked about?
May I speak?
Yeah, right up to the microphone, please.
Midge Gibbons. Again, just to explain why we wanted a two-car garage, as anyone who's lived in Westford before, as we have, and had driveways up to here with snow, will know what it's like. Bob and I are getting up there. I have health issues, he has heart issues, I have back issues. And that's the reason why we wanted the two-car garage, so we can be protected from the snow and pretty much hunker down in our house, okay? That's the reason why. The other reason is, the other part of the basement issue that you brought up before about that sewing craft room, which is large, but it's still on the same floor as the garage. Okay, so I use that extensively because I do a lot of work for charities. I've made over fifty quilts for Project Linus that gives quilts to children in hospitals. I've done quilts of valor for veterans who fought in the war. I've done pillowcases for kids who were picked up, taken from broken homes, picked up by the police. And so I do all of that work, but because of my back, I need a big space. I can't be on my, on the floor anymore. Which is why I envisioned having a huge table down there, plus my four sewing machines to do all that work. So that is the reason why. Just to give you an explanation, I'm not saying it's, you know, an excuse, or that's why, and that's why you should approve it. I'm just saying that's the explanation behind it.
Your husband stayed, you go to Florida for the winter?
We don't. We sold that house in Florida to move up here specifically, back here full-time. We were here seven months of the year before for the last ten years. We sold our house in Florida, we sold our house at Summer Village. We're living in an apartment, we needed the money for this house. So that's what we're doing. So we're living in an apartment now, waiting for this house to be built. We did that to be near our grandchildren, which we've just had two in the last year. So we made a sacrifice moving from the beautiful weather up to here. But where we wanted to be was Westford. We didn't want to be in any other town because we were comfortable here.
Isn't it amazing what you do for those grandkids?
Yes, exactly.
More than your own.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we need a motion to continue this to the next meeting, October twentieth. What was that, Jeff?
October twentieth.
October twentieth. All in favor? All right?
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
I was thinking we weren't going to see tonight, Council.
How are you?
So this is a request from twenty-one to twenty-three Carlisle Road for requests for a minor modification.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll keep it quite brief. Attorney Melissa Robbins from the law firm of Ferrell and Robbins. I'm here tonight with Scott Clark from Clark Development. The board is very familiar with this project, I know. We're under construction. We have nine market rate units right now that have occupancy permits. We have started the supportive services unit, I'm sure you can see it going out there. But we have had delays with that supportive- But we have had delays with that supportive services unit. It was actually twofold. One was the good news that we got funding in our first round. The bad news, due to the pandemic and some other slowdowns, we didn't actually get the funding for the supportive housing unit until July. The other issue with this, with the unit was that initially we were doing modular housing out there for that supportive housing unit, and I don't know how many of you know, with the marketing materials for modular units, it went through the roof. So we had to go back to conventional construction out there for that supportive services unit. And due to that, really, the construction just started on that unit at the beginning of August. The foundation is in, the septic system's in, started the line for the utilities this week. Actually, I have some new pictures. There was a couple in your packet, but I took some fresh pictures. Let's see. There's seven there. So you can see now that the foundation's poured and things are moving along quite quickly. But the issue is that there's a condition of the permit right now that says that we can only have 10 market rate occupancy permits, and we can't have any more until the occupancy permit for this building is completed. Obviously, that's not going to happen. We're going to be delayed here with this supportive housing unit. We're hoping to have, start framing this unit and be fully framed to the roof by October. So what I'm hoping that the board will do is modify that condition, which is right now holding back seven market rate units and just hold back two market rate units. Certainly, plenty of leverage still for the board. You can see that we're actively moving forward with construction and started just as soon as we could. I didn't put this in the letter, but as a matter of fact, Mr. Clark even fronted $200,000 of his own money during the time before he got funding, just to make sure that this was still proceeding so he could start as soon as he could. So that was my request before the board tonight, is to change that number seven to number two. I think we have one more occupancy permit left before we have no more market rate occupancy permits.
So you've got nine, you got 14 units sold?
We have, there's 17 market units total. Right now, we have nine with occupancy permits, and so we can have one more.
How many are sold?
How many are sold?
How many are sold?
Nine are sold, and the 10th one is October 1st.
Right.
So as of October 1st, I can't sell anymore.
Right.
So is the frame and crew framing units?
Yeah. Well, you mean on the market rate side?
Yeah.
Yeah. In fact, we're framing, we're down, we only have one foundation left that isn't in process. But every foundation is in, and pretty much so, the 16th of the 17 buildings is actually going to be sheathed, the roofs, the roof sheathing's going on tomorrow, so...
So it makes sense to me to take that frame and crew and start building this thing pretty quick.
That's the next one.
Yes.
Yeah. Actually, where we are right now is we backfilled the foundation, and we're starting. We've got to, because this is slab-on-grade, we've got to do the rough plumbing underneath, get some utility work done underneath, then finish out the flooring, you know, put on the concrete floor, and only then can I start framing, but that's actually in about three, two to three weeks is when we can start framing.
Right.
Yeah. I couldn't start framing today if I wanted to, just because that's not where we are in the construction.
So with this seven-unit building, are you all set with the fire department as far as sprinkler system, fire alarm system?
Everything's been approved.
Yeah, everything's fully designed.
Yeah. In fact, I've got the building permit. I mean, everything's good to go.
Right.
And we did, it was July 30th is when we got our funding.
Right. So there's been no delay. Obviously, there's been no delay in construction that's anything on the applicant's behalf. We started construction just as soon as we closed, got our state funding. So this is just a delay in the processing. Everything's moving forward. I can tell you that I suggested this condition myself, and a couple members of this board said, "Counselor, what's going to happen if you don't get funding in the first round?" Because that was a real risk. Most affordable housing projects don't get funded in the first round. And I said I would come back here and would have to try to figure out a different bonding procedure to deal with that at that point. The good news is we did get funding. The bad news is there was a pandemic, and we got a little delay in funding, but we're still moving forward. I want to make sure that this board still has plenty of leverage to make sure that we're going to complete the housing, which we obviously are. I just want to make sure that the project can proceed. So really, what we're asking for is five more market rate units, and we'll leave two on the table so that you can be ensured that everything gets completed out there.
So nine you have occupancy for?
Yeah.
One is sold beyond that, so that's 10. How many deposits do you have on units?
We've got, just actually, just as of right now, that's it. I don't, I've got about six more units, seven more units that I am, that are on the market.
So I guess...
Timing is by October, and we're targeting March as the occupancy.
This is the bill, and I thought we were going to go full steam ahead on.
Well, we couldn't go full steam ahead until we got the state's funding. Remember, we had to go through a funding round to get the state grant approval, so that's what delayed it.
This was the big selling point.
Yes.
As concerned.
Right. And it is proceeding. Everything is moving. We have a partner. It's fully funded, permitted, full building permits. Everything's moving. It was just delayed because of the pandemic. Obviously, no fault of the applicant.
Well, I'd be inclined to release one a month.
One a month, starting in?
October, October, November, September, January, February, March.
Occupancy permit, on market rate side.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then if we need, if we need any, if we find ourselves in a bad place, we can always come back to this board and have another discussion. But we shouldn't, because it's our expectation that this will proceed, and the supportive housing unit would be done by March.
That's only me. Any other comments from this board? Well, a question. Do you see any obstacles to completing the seven units?
Not at all.
No.
So you...
We're fully funded, and we're under...
Funded, but you have all the materials committed that you need from a supply perspective? Are you not, are you assured you're not going to come back in two or three months and say, "Oops, we didn't get the material we needed to complete it"?
No. I've got trusses ordered. We've got windows on order. It, you know, it is, it's, you know, it's just, it's one of those things, just about a six-month build-out. And then I've got the sprinkler system and that type of stuff that is going to extend it out just a little bit, but we're, I mean, in many respects, it's going along nicely.
So I'd be supportive of Scott's suggestion, but I don't know what I would do if you came back again for an extension.
Are we going to do one a month, or are we going to do up to the five that she's asking for?
One a month. One in October, one in November, one in December, one in January, one in February, one in March.
Six.
So just so I understand...
I'll give them two in October.
Okay. So the 11th...
You've got one sold already.
The 11th one would be October. Okay.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, I don't anticipate, you know, that being an issue.
That's fine. I like a lot of leverage.
That's fair, Mr. Chair. And we have a high expectation that this will be done in March, so we are...
Yeah. And I can, I guarantee you this building will be built.
Right.
Chair, so, one, we would be looking for the board to vote that this is a minor modification and to authorize that request, but just because I'm feeling a little slow of the mind, are we saying, starting in October, one per month for a total of five or six?
You're going to have two in October, one in November, one in December, one in January, one in February, one in March. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
So we're going to release them all before that building's completed?
I really want to see this thing get done.
Yeah, I think, my suggestion is that we, my suggestion was to hold two back.
Right.
So if you want to give one a month, that's...
Total of five.
So basically, October through February, done, and then he's got to finish the building in March.
You have two areas of leverage.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You release one a month, and then still hold the last two.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I was assuming he was going to be done in February because he's that quick. See. So I guess we need a motion to declare this, that it is a request for a minor modification. Several seconds. All of us in favor?
Aye.
And Jeff, you have the schedule as far as?
Two. It sounds like the board will authorize staff to sign off on five additional units at one per month beginning in October, with two units to remain reserved against the supportive housing.
Someone make that motion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you. Got hammer going. Okay. Under other business, staff has been so good to us as to send in some accessory dwelling unit bylaws from other towns. It's quite interesting, some of these towns and what they do.
So first of all, kudos to Ciara. She's the one that did all the real work here.
Great job, Ciara.
Thank you.
It might be helpful for you to get this perspective, and we're not asking for you to decide anything tonight, but we just wanted to show you what we have, and Ciara had some thoughts about what might be good to think about.
Yeah. So the first thing really to bring up is this excerpt that I have from Chapter 350 of the X-2020, and in its definition of accessory dwelling unit, it has it defined as it's not larger in floor area than half the floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller.
Mm-hmm.
That is a suggestion by the state. You don't necessarily have to go by that specifically, but compared to our existing bylaw, it certainly is different. I took a look at the ADUs that we've had since 2015, all of them. The average square footage was 904 square feet. About half of them also had to seek a variance on top of the special permit just to have the ADU, and nearly all of those variances were for size. The 15% increase and the 33% of the gross floor area specifically for the common variances. Every time they were granted as well, the special permits and the variances all did end up granted, and so they must have met the criteria, but the point being that this is something that we keep seeing, and it might be worth thinking about whether or not anything, you know, could be changed in the bylaw regarding ADUs. I did pull a few, I think five different towns, and I just highlighted a few things that maybe would be of interest to you, not necessarily to copy paste into Westford's bylaw, but just to kind of see how different towns are doing it. For example, Acton has that that 50% gross floor area, or 800 square feet, as opposed to 900. Different things are certainly appropriate in different towns, but these were kind of helpful to look at, see a few, you know, potential suggestions. I believe this is a, this is a, sorry, draft from Bedford, Bedford. I'm not sure whether or not this draft had passed, so I apologize, I don't have the information, but this draft did go to their meeting, and they had, you know, 900 square feet or 1,000 square feet if, you know, enhanced energy efficiency or universal design standards are met, so there can be some caveats to size and what's allowed. So basically, it's just kind of a collection of things to just take a look at, you know, think about them in relation to Westford, what might be appropriate, maybe what we have right now is to consider based on what we've seen in town, what's appropriate for town, Chapter 358 definitions, and then, you know, what some other towns nearby have been doing.
So this is something that I have brought to Jeff and said that I think our bylaw needs some revision and work done to it. Ciara's obviously come up with a whole bunch of great ideas, some which I like, some which I don't. The Belcher Town, it appears that they allow you to build an accessory dwelling unit and rent it to just about anybody as a means of income, which I don't think that's what this board has had in mind with the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Because Westford has so many different sizes and shapes of houses, there's a whole group of people in Westford, NAB, the villages and everything, who live in smaller, more modest homes, that by the time they get done trying to put an ADU in, you know, it's 200 or 300 square feet under our bylaw, well, it's not big enough, you know? And so I think we need to make it an either-or, or something of that nature. That's just me. But as you can see from Ciara's homework here, you know, the size of these ADUs is pretty good. I mean, you're 500 to 1,000 square feet, and a bunch in the middle, there's a couple of little ones in there, but I just think we need to wall all this over and see what changes that we should be bringing forth.
I think The Sun has an article in the paper because they have those ADUs.
Oh, do they?
Yeah. I didn't read it yet because I'll read it when I get home.
I think that Acton's saying about not transferring ownership into, from the principal, you're not under condominium form of ownership is something I don't think we thought of.
Say that again, Jim.
Condoing an ADU. That's in the Acton bylaw, not permitting the condoing of it. That's something probably would need to be up front off.
And also, just because I highlighted something, doesn't mean I'm suggesting that it's right for Westford. Just wanted to bring your attention to that.
This is some good stuff here.
Yeah, no, I think this is very good. Yeah, this is excellent.
Excellent.
Excellent job.
I was writing term papers. I always thought plagiarism was the best way to get through term papers. If someone else has a good idea, you might as well steal it. That was before the internet.
So Jeff, I know you have some comments.
No, just so, as far as moving forward, do you want to take a little time and let us know before next meeting, like, things that you do like and don't like?
Yeah.
And then we can, Ciara can work on that.
Email her if that was...
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because as I told you, Jeff, my goal was this year to get this in a form that we can take to town meeting and do what we have to do. You had suggested in some instances that it might just be as a matter of right, which I don't know if we want to do that, but I just think that we can improve on what we have. And I think what happens, too, is people's living arrangements and the family dynamic has changed over the last 20 or 30 years, and we just don't want to be the ones that are slow at meet and change. We want to try and adapt and allow, if it's an elderly person to age in place, or bring in other family member, or whatever it is, I just think that's part of it. Now, obviously, at some point, these ADUs wind up back in front of us, and it's not a family member because the house has been sold. Hopefully, they realize they have to come back to us to get permission to keep it as an ADU. And we've done pretty good at keeping that in line, so, yeah, I think what we should all do is kind of review this, pick out the good, the bad, and the ugly, and then you can either email staff or make notes and hand them to her, or whatever you want to do. And then she can compile it all, because she's obviously very good at that. And we'll see if we can make some improvements in Westford's zoning bylaws.
And if you folks would be kind enough to think about it over the next few weeks, maybe the option of detached accessory dwelling units, because that's another big variable.
I will say, Belcher Town has a provision for detached, which was not previously in their bylaw, and I did happen to be on their planning board at that time, so I was involved in that, and that was a situation like here with the size. People kept coming to them for extra relief, I guess, for that, and they kept having to deny, you know, if someone has an old barn, they want to convert, and nope, just not allowed. There's no, there's absolutely no option for it. So, and that may or may not be appropriate here, but in some places, detached...
I would have to comment on a lot of size.
Well, we've actually done a detached, two on Concord Road.
So if memory serves, it is permitted, however, the structure has to have been in existence for ten or more years.
Oh, okay.
So that's.
Oh, yeah, right here, yep.
Yep. We were, we were operating with our hands tied earlier, you know, a few years ago, we were, the criteria was a lot different, and we were trying to do what the state wanted us to do, and they've changed their mind on this as radical as anybody now, they're really pushing for it.
So, okay, well, we look forward to your, your feedback.
Thank you.
I would just suggest, I don't know if everybody's gone down Elmero, but before we have another, if nobody has, it's worth sometimes, I think, taking, even overall, before we get some of these petitions, taking a, looking at the plans, one thing, keep going back to parents' week, you know. Look at the plan on the paper, look pretty good, then you see it.
They're awful.
But I mean, it's, some of those places are worth.
Have you looked at the guy that was just before us?
Yeah.
He's now putting the ones in between the ones that are already built. Now it's getting real tight over there.
So, you know, I just, I just suggest it, it's good. That's a unique area.
When you get surveyors to try to agree on lot lines, like that plan that Mizobram did?
Yeah.
That's junk, absolute junk. As in, it cannot be used for retracement of property lines, the purpose is for septic design only, and that's the context it should be viewed in.
What do you want, our PLS is?
And I, when Scott Clark was here, I asked about, you know, the floor design and fire alarm plans, because we rejected four plans in a row. They just kept throwing the same plans back at us, exactly, like.
They rejected by who?
Really?
Who is it?
He was a sprinkler system for that seven.
For the seven-unit building and the fire alarm.
I'm going to tell you, I thought that building was a priority to get done.
Yeah, that's why I just asked him if he had all the approvals.
All right.
Motion or?
Yeah, we have a motion to close this meeting.
So, removed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed.